Like to call the Williamsport City Council meeting to order here, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Randy Allison and remain standing for the flag.
Before I say a brief prayer, I just want to take a moment for us to honor two individuals that we've lost in the city over the past couple of weeks. Vince Mattio, who headed up the Chamber of Commerce for a long time in the city, who was a big force in a lot of different ways and worked hard for the city and for the communities around us as well. And then Jessie Bloom just passed away. She was the first female elected mayor in the city of Williamsport back in the eighties, and she was a groundbreaker. I think a lot of us got to know both of them on a personal basis over the years. And I don't think anybody would disagree that they were both filled with vigor, with passion, and a love for this city and the people in it. So I'd like to just take a moment and honor them silently. And then I'll say a brief prayer for their families. Heavenly Father, what does we think about these two people who affected so many for good things, Lord, and accomplished so much for the good of this community? We want to remember their families tonight. We pray for your comfort. We pray for your strength to carry them through these times of mourning. And then to lead them on with the good memories they have of these individuals that they knew so well, loved so well, and all the good things that they received from them. Would we thank you in Jesus's name? Amen.
Amen.
Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Randy. That was beautiful. Next on the agenda is approval of city council minutes. Any changes or questions? If not.
We need a motion.
Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Frank, can you take the vote?
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Limited courtesy of the floor, we have no one here tonight for that. Chris, is the mayor on the phone? Next item on the agenda is appointments and reappointments for the Water and Sanitary Authority. Mayor, are you present?
I'm here. Can you hear me, Councilwoman?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good evening, Vice President Katz, members of council and the administration. What you have before you this evening is a reappointment and a new appointment to the Williamsport Municipal Water and Sanitary Authorities. The reappointment is Dr. Kent Trocky, who has been an upstanding member of the board for the last five years. And he has graciously agreed to serve another term. And then the new appointment is Katie De Silva, who I believe is there this evening in person. And she has also graciously agreed to serve on the authorities' board. And she comes to us, recently retired from the Clinton County as a planner. She also has experience with their sewer authority up there. So she does have a background in this arena and some technical skills and experience there as well. So she's not coming into this brand new, so we're excited about that. We're excited about both of Dr. Trocky and Mrs. De Silva. And with her being there in person, if there's any questions for her, I'm sure she would be happy to answer. I'll turn it back over to you, Councilwoman Katz. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I need a motion on this.
So moved.
Any questions? No questions. Mrs. Frank will take a vote.
It was reviewed in ERC.
That's right, it was reviewed in ERC. I'm sorry.
... community for a number of years and has been an integral part in the old city expansion project. And he continued to make plans and improve that area.
And then. With her being there in person, any questions?
And our new appointment, who we brought forward, Miss Katie De Silva. We had her resume sent to us, and I just wanted to point out a few things on that because it is very impressive. And as I mentioned in the ERC meeting, the Water Authority Board and the Zoning Hearing Board are two that require some level of expertise and a level of commitment with time. So Mr. Silva has been a, excuse me, a member of the City-Cog Natural Gas Cooperative, the Clinton County Economic Partnership, the PA Wilds Center Board for Directors and PA Wilds Planning Team, the City-Cog Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Keystone Energy Technology Enterprise, and WXBI Community Radio, just to name a few of her qualifications. So we have quite the gem joining the board, so we thank you for that, Mr. Silva.
Is she present tonight?
She is present.
Hi there. Would you like to say anything? We want to thank you very much for serving. Mrs. Frank, the vote.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Motion carried. All's. Next thing on the agenda is Mayor, you are up, and I'll have Janice Frank read the resolution short form, please.
Resolution to approve the 2022 James David Robinson Cultural Arts Grant Program and Associated Awards.
Give a motion in a second.
Yes, good evening again, Vice President Katz, members of council administration. What you have before you is the resolution for the James Robinson Cultural Grant. The three submissions this year were the Repas Band, the Williamsport Symphony Orchestra, and the Community Arts Center. The recommendation was one thousand each of those. It's what we have allocated each year is $3,000. And with the three submissions, the recommendation again was one thousand for each of those. As I'm sure everyone is aware, this is in memory of James Robinson, the cultural grant that we do each year to remember him. And this year, we only had the three submissions. And so that's the recommendation to go to each organization. This was reviewed in finance. Thank you.
Ms. Mealy, this went to finance.
Yes, this was reviewed in finance, and there's nothing. I think since I've been on council and probably long before, we've been handing out this grant. The total amount of funds, dollars, hasn't changed at that time. I think the only discussion we had was the last couple of years. But we speculated, I think, that we might have just related to the whole amount of funding. Too large pool of applicants, frankly, just reducing the amount of funding. These are all deserving enterprises. Many of them, all of them have received money from the city via this program in the past. And all the programming that it supports is important and does good work in the community. The discussion was positive.
Thank you. Any other questions from any councilmen? If not, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mayor. I guess we.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to skip around on the agenda here. We're going to go down to item number twenty-one. Demolition at nine seventeen, nine nineteen, Second Street. And this is with the College of Technology. Mr. Nar, you are up.
Good evening, Councilwomen Katz and members of council. What I present to you tonight is a request from Pennsylvania College of Technology to demolish the property at nine seventeen, nine nineteen, Second Street. The property is currently within the Institutional Zoning District, and the current reason for the demo is because it's unsafe and unstructurally sound at this time.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions on the demo? Any questions? Yes, go ahead.
Just as we often ask in cases like this, it would appear that the property next to this property has also been demolished. Does the college also own that property, and are there any plans for the lots?
They do own that, and this time, there's no current plan for development.
Okay.
Any other questions? We'll take the vote, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Our next item is twenty-two on the agenda. Certificate of Appropriateness Signage for Residents in One Fifty West Church Street. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. Okay, Mr. Nar.
What we have for you tonight is a request to change signage out at the residents in. It is within the Central Business District. What they are proposing is his current lettering is red lettering. What they are trying to do is swap it out for channel lettering, which will be white. You do have the existing as well as the proposed, and I do have a representative via Zoom.
And this, any questions? Yes, Ms. Mealy.
It looks as though Sarah Fonsor out of style.
Just a little bit, yes.
No, no other questions. I think that I would say that to my taste, the new signage is an improvement on the old signage. And my assumption is that my taste is just following the times, so thank you.
Any other questions? I'll say the same thing. I think the signage really looks good. Really does. Take the vote, please, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is Certificate of Appropriateness Signage for Town Place Suites, Ten West Church Street. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Nar.
What we have before you tonight is a request from Town Place Suites. It is located in Central Business District. What they are replacing to do is replace channel lettering, which is blue and red with black lettering. You do have existing and proposed, and I have the same representative here as well.
Great. Any questions? No questions? Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to go back up to the top, on number six on the agenda. Ordinance providing for preferred residency for city employees. Need a motion?
So moved.
Hello, Molly.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is the second reading. We discussed at the last meeting that there was a 2020 ordinance requiring residency in the city for about ten employees who are at will. The balance of the employees are all unionized and have a separate contractual requirement due to the current labor market and our struggles with finding people who have certain certifications and experience required for positions such as the codes administrator. We are requesting to make the change from having it be required to preferred that these employees live within the city limits. We would post positions as such, saying that residency is preferred. If we have two candidates with equal qualifications, we would give the position to the resident. Any questions?
Any questions from anyone? If not, Mrs. Frank, we will take the vote. Oh, you do? I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
It's not so much a question as just a point. I agree with the administration that I think, given especially some of the certain of the positions that we're looking for with the qualifications, I can understand the need to expand our pool. But I would underline the fact that I think that we need, as a city, and maybe frankly, it should even be some sort of an ad hoc committee between the administration and city council. We need to put together some sort of a plan to incentivize people to move into the community. And I don't just mean ordinary people. I think that is also an important focus. But our employees should want to live in the city because it's a good place to live. And so I think that we should, we've talked a number of times about putting together a couple of carrots that will attract candidates that we might find who are living outside of the city to move into the city. And I think that we need to work on that ASAP because the residency ordinance in and of itself was not enough and would never have been enough, I don't think, to sort of force people to move into the city. But to make the city an attractive place to live for people who are looking for new employment, I think would be key to achieving that goal through another mechanism. So I guess if the administration wants to think about possibly maybe creating some sort of a subcommittee or something like that, they could look at that for a while. I don't think it would take long to put together a pool of incentives, but we would definitely need to focus on it and not just talk about it. So, thanks.
I like that idea.
We're not the only ones. The school district is in the same position. And the last time when we formed this ordinance and talked about it, we also wanted to include the Chamber of Commerce and from the school district and the city because we need to do this in order to bring in more taxes. Because as I've stated, and I know we've all stated, we're not bringing in enough money at this point to pay all of our bills. And I said, we have to be careful with this, and I agree with Ms. Mealy. We should have an ad hoc meeting that we can start working on. How can we accomplish this goal to bring more people into our city? And this wasn't strong enough to begin with. It really wasn't. And we do have to do something that's going to entice people to come here. So, you know, and I think we'll talk to the mayor afterwards and see where we can go with this. And I, you know, and of course, with your help also.
Yep, sounds good. We can start working on that. I like it.
Okay. Anybody else with any kind of questions?
Yes.
Just in the vein of talking about these things. Yeah, I can imagine things we can incentivize with, and I think it needs to fit in with the larger plan that, the different things we're talking about, about revitalizing the whole city. As that would be an underlying foundation to build on. And it's more of a long term. I think we can do things in the short term. But I think we can, you know, our goal is to have Williamsport be on another level all across the board. And there are things underway that are going to, some developments that are now going on that are going to help towards that. So I think we can come up with some good things that will fit into long range and short term.
Any other questions? Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is ordinance for transfer ordinance number one. This is the final reading. Mrs. Frank, if you can read this in short form.
An ordinance transfer ordinance number one.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Woodring is not here, so I'm going to address this ordinance. She came to us, and this is the final reading. And what she would like to do is she needs a new copier, and she would like to take from her supply supplies line item of $600 and place it into the equipment line item. And the initial budget was $600, like I said, from the supplies. And she would need to transfer $200 more into her equipment account, which would be account number three zero one zero six four zero four zero. And we all realize that she does need a better copy machine. Is there any questions from anybody? Do I take a motion? Any questions? Yes.
Just to be clear, this is transfer ordinance number one and not transfer ordinance number five?
According to the agenda, it says, and I saw that also.
But according to the copy I'm looking at, it says number five.
And mine says, yes.
Right, okay.
I did check on that, and Adam said they were from 2022.
Yeah, so it should be.
So he said start at 2023 with number one.
But we're changing the 2022 budget, right?
Yes.
That's what it says in the ordinance.
Good point.
I'm a little confused about, given the 2022 is already over, why we're changing the 2022 budget. Are we changing the 2022 budget? Second very important question. Are we sure about that?
I believe it should be 2023.
Okay.
Because the money's going to be spent, or it's going to be purchased this year.
Okay.
And also the effective date is this year.
Okay, so do we, I mean, often we approve transfers after the fact that it's the purchase has been made. The money has been spent. We need to transfer the funding to cover it. Do we know which way? I mean, perhaps we should simply table it until next time, I guess. Do we know for sure which way it goes? Okay, so this would be a modification under the 2023 budget. Okay, so we need to amend the wording in the ordinance to be 2023? Yes.
It should.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to amend, changing in the first paragraph, 2022 to 2023 general fund budget.
Second.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
And, okay, we'll have to vote on that.
Yes, let's vote on the amendment. Let's vote on the amendment. Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. And I don't think Mrs. Woodring was aware of what she was doing with this. I think that's what it was.
That's pretty clear.
I think what it was, with the first reading, she started preparing this the end of last year. So I know that all of us, the end of last year, beginning of this year, still use.
I think that's how this came about with the.
Got it to 2022.
But it's going to be taken out.
Just to be clear, we are modifying the 2023 budget to reflect.
Yeah, because she hadn't purchased it yet.
Which means the other thing that we need to then change in this ordinance is, it is now. I would like to make a motion to amend transfer ordinance number five to read transfer ordinance number one because this is the first transfer ordinance of 2023.
Any questions from anyone else? If not, we'll take the vote, Janice.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Okay, so then we go back to the initial transfer ordinance, which will have to, at this point, $200 taken out of the 2023 budget. And there's something that has to be done because it's changing from her supply line item into her equipment line item. Right, Norm?
Yeah, that's right.
That's mine?
Yes.
So we're just transferring really $200?
Correct.
Okay. We took a motion on this, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on this?
We'll take the vote, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Good catch, Ms. Mealy. Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinance fee schedule from the treasurer's office. This will be the first reading. Mrs. Frank, if you could read this in short form.
An ordinance fee schedule in first reading.
Hello, Mr. Mackey.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
You jumped it.
You guys want to say anything or?
No, we're done.
Okay.
I got time or so.
No, I think you should.
No, you've got to talk about this. No, no, come back here.
All right, so with regards to this, we've been making increased efforts to increase compliance with our taxes. And I believe that some of these fees are necessitated to help cover the costs that it's having on our office and how much time we have to spend on this. We're spending an exorbitant amount on envelopes, just trying to get these out. And having this fee will help discourage people from not following the rules that we've set out for people before. So that's why some of this stuff is in here, and it's more about covering our excess efforts and increasing compliance with our taxes.
And this went to finance?
This went to finance, yes.
Okay. Ms. Mealy?
Yep, this went to finance, and many of these fees are new in terms of being recorded and publicly available. And we asked, I think perhaps in the expectation that something had increased, whether any of the fees had changed. And actually, Mr. Mackey informed us that the NSF fee has decreased because I think there's a gradual move to not make money on penalizing people who fail to have sufficient funds when they give, you know, a check, both in the banking world and also in an area like this.
Correct.
So that was good to see. It's pretty rare that the city decreases fees. But aside from that, nothing too exciting. I think the only other thing to point out is the somewhat of a penalty fee for a business that has failed to acquire, failed to acquire a business or mercantile, business, but with a mercantile tax license. And that makes sense. It's not much money, but at least it's a little bit of a ding for not doing their paperwork. And the reception in finance was generally positive. This will be posted to the city's website as well, so it will be as open and available as we can make it.
And we'll have copies posted at my office because I want to make this as well-known as I can so that we have people actually taking a look at this and filing appropriately.
Any questions from anyone else? The only question I have is, how many are you sending out?
So I think probably today we send out between 20 and 30, and we're sending that out. Every time we receive filings coming in, I'd say about 20 to 30% of the ones that we've received in either don't have the appropriate backup with them, which would be the $20 fee that's on there. And then that would come back into us because what we're doing and we're trying to get is we're trying to get people to follow the rules that have been set out in our ordinances and our rules and regulations. And we can't go ahead and verify what someone's income is if they don't tell us, if there's not provided for. So we're asking for a federal filing form, a detailed accounting report, or something in writing to show us, hey, look, I made this much in the year, instead of just putting it on our city filing form. Because that's just one section of it. And I feel that if you're including a detailed accounting report or a federal filing form, it's more easy for us to verify that, yes, you did make these funds because that kind of adds the backup that the federal government's going to come down and check on you just to make sure you made that money as well, rather than just telling us and saying, oh, yeah, I didn't make anything. We've had several businesses that have claimed to have made nothing, but through other means, we've discovered they had made something that they did not include on their backup because there was no backup.
Okay, thank you.
It also helps us with verifying that some of their funds are actually earned in the city versus outside. I had one business telling us that they made tons of money in the city, and it was all in loyal sock. So that actually saved somebody some money on that end. I had one business telling us that they made tons of money in the city and it was all in loyal sock, so that actually saved somebody some money on that end.
It's interesting. Really interesting.
You take this honesty thing too far.
You know, I'm trying to do what I can for everybody.
Like, wow. Well, there's no other questions? Take a vote, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is
resolution, real estate refund for Kohl's.
Mr. Mackey?
So following an assessment change by the county, it was deemed that the city is giving them back six thousand, six thousand dollars, twelve dollars and eighty-three cents. So that that's going to be given back out of the general fund for the twenty twenty-two tax assessment.
Okay. Do I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we're doing this a little backwards, okay?
Sorry, we'll get through it, Bonnie.
I know, we're working on it, we're working on it. This is kind of discouraging in a way.
It is what it is. We, we can't change how much the property is worth and this was following with the county deemed that the property was worth. If it makes you feel better, we, we do increase the MVP filings by having that fee schedule come in, so I'm trying to cover any losses from real estate with that one.
Okay. Did this go to finance?
No.
This didn't go?
This is a pretty standard procedure too with some of our stuff.
And, and no amount of discussion changes it.
No, I guess, I guess it doesn't. Anybody else, any questions at all? Other than Mrs. Frank will take a vote.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Item number ten on the agenda is a resolution, property tax penalty waiver. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
You're up again.
So Governor Wolf signed in a penalty provision for property taxes that were to come into effect if a person had sold or transferred their property during the movement or during the sending out taxes. So during, when we're sending out taxes, if someone sold their property, did not receive it, and they can follow five guidelines that Governor Wolf laid out, then as long as they do those, the penalty be waived it, but they have to have a check for the face value ready to go when they do hand in this form. I'm going to have copies of the form in my office and on public display so people can read about it if they'd like.
To finance?
This did come to fin, this did come to finance. And I think, and actually, I'll have to excuse me, Mr. Mackey, did we make any change? Shall I make a change now to the wording in this?
Correct. The only, the only change that I believe we'd make is just during property transfers on that last paragraph there.
Right. Yeah, the, the only discussion we had about this actually, since it seems like a reasonable thing to come down from the state is all of us, I believe, initially read this and assumed that we were looking at waiving additional charges in a kind of a broad array of situations, when in fact this only applies to when property is transferred in a tax year and the tax bill may not have been received by the person who was supposed to be paying the, the property taxes. So we decided that it would at least help a little bit if there were arguments to come down in future about waiving fees if we inserted in the resolution following in certain situations, the language involving property transfers. And so I would make a motion to amend the resolution in the second paragraph toward the end to read for real estate taxes in certain situations involving property transfer.
Any questions on this, on the amendment? If not, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Now we're going back to the original resolution. Is there any questions on this? If not, Mrs. Frank, we'll take a vote.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Okay, next item on the agenda, number eleven, resolution exonerating the city treasurer from collection of twenty twenty-two real estate tax.
Correct. So for twenty twenty-two, we had outstanding nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, thirty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents of uncollected out of our total, which was close to fifteen million dollars. This is right in line with our ninety-two percent collection rate from last year. And for our school taxes, we collected about thirteen million, five hundred forty-three and sixty-eight dollars, give or take a few cents. So this is to exonerate the treasurer from collecting these twenty twenty-two taxes. And this, again, this is standard procedure that Nick had done in prior years as well.
This went to finance?
No, this is, this is just. So, yeah, sorry, Bonnie.
Okay, anybody have any questions on this? First of all, I do need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions on this? Stop laughing. No questions. Mrs. Frank will take the vote.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is resolution on co, resolution on collected city real estate taxes for twenty twenty-two.
Correct. So this is the turning over of the nine hundred thirty-eight thousand to the county for collection and they will do so and make their best effort to collect those funds for us and then turn them over as they come in.
Need a motion?
So moved, second.
The question I have for this is, well, this comes down every year and how much, it seems like it's probably the same names every year, isn't it?
I don't know if I can exactly say that because this is my first year turning it over, but I, I can recognize a few names over the years and I, I am working on at least trying to get in contact with some of them.
Would you say that some of these, some of these names that they're still leaving, living in the city?
I know a few are, yes.
And the county does their best to, to collect these taxes?
If the county cannot collect the taxes, then it goes up for judicial sales and then they won't have the property anymore after that.
Okay.
So the county, the county does do its best to make their best opportunities work with that. And if it doesn't, then they use whatever tools are available, turn them back into revenue generating properties for the city.
It also seems like it's close to the same amount every year.
Yeah, that, that ninety-two percent is what it was running over year over year. We usually send about two notices, the beginning notice, the first duplicates that come out, and then the second notice goes out around October to try and get people to recognize that they still have a bill due. And for the most fortunate, does seem to get a big push in, but that ninety-two percent, it seems to be where we're stuck at year over year.
It would be nice if we could reduce that even more.
Correct. Is the, the only thing it does is just increase the amount of penalty that taxpayer has to do, and I hate to see that.
Any questions from anyone?
No, I just did want to say one quick thing though, on the part of Mr. Mackey is that we've had some, some pretty good conversations about your progress as far as identifying and collecting those taxes. I just wanted to, for the record, say, I'm, I'm very impressed as far as how diligent, how thorough he's been working through all of this. He spends a considerable amount of time digging into it to try and make sure that we're collecting every bit that we can.
Not the easiest thing to do.
No, but it's fun.
Any other questions? If not, Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Kat.
Yes. Uh, next item on the agenda is item fourteen. Mrs. Frank, I'm gonna let you read this.
Resolution authorizing agreement between the Williamsport Bureau of Fire and Higher Information Group.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. How's everyone doing tonight?
We're, we're doing good.
Ready to go home, right? Before you is a resolution for an agreement between the Williamsport Bureau of Fire and the Higher Information Group who we've been using. We are looking at purchasing a new copier, scanner, printer, fax machine. The one that we have currently is nine years old. We've been having a few issues with it. And it's, this machine here is able to send rather than a fax, it will scan and email the document. It's a lot cleaner. We got it for a just, just about the same as the previous machine, so it's about two hundred and eleven dollars a month. And that's for a thousand black and white copies, five hundred color copiers per month.
That's it. This went to Public Works.
It did.
And
No, Public Safety.
Public Safety.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm on both committees. I knew I heard this before. Mr. Mackey?
Yeah, it did come to Public Safety, contrary to popular belief, there still is a Public Safety Committee. This is our first meeting in quite a while. We had a brief discussion on this. Could you, Chief, just remind us again where this, what line item this is coming out of?
Contracted service.
That's right. Thank you. I couldn't remember. No, it's a pretty standard agreement here and according to Chief, this is about the life cycle of a machine like this. So five years with a lease of this kind, you know, we'll be able to get a good value for trading in on a better model in five years and I can turn this over to Vince, Councilman Olivia here, who had good things to say about this machine as he has had experience with it, so.
Thank you, Councilman Mackey. Sorry, it's just one of those nights, isn't it? No, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good machine. We've dealt with these machines before. And what's nice about the, this particular machine is you know, during our conversation of public safety, you were asking about if it has paper jams and those kinds of problems as all any kind of print technology always inevitably does have. What's nice is the technology that are in these machines now actually tell you exactly what is wrong and where to look and everything is labeled, labeled by letter and by number and it's step, it walks you through step by step on exactly what to do and how to fix it. So it's, it greatly reduces the amount of maintenance costs as far as having to call out for ma, maintenance technicians to come work on things. So there's a big cost savings there, which is which is obviously to, to everyone's benefit. So, no, it's a great machine.
We did get in, we did get a a good education on the copy machine. It sounds, it's an incre, incredible piece of equipment. And I think it'll help your department tremendously.
Absolutely.
Anybody else, else have any questions? Yes, Ms. Mealy?
I, I'm, the only thing I'm asking or curious about is, so all service calls are included? So we won't, that's excellent. The, the drums developer and toner, I'm assuming is only up to that number of copies?
Yeah, anything over that, you pay an extra fee, an added fee.
Oh, okay. Oh, so the, the drums developer and toner are included, but we're paying a fee for the copies.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And this to go through Austin?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Any other questions? If not, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing a contract for professional consulting services with Cetacog of Governments.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Good evening, Mr. Manny.
Good evening, Vice President Katz and members of council. We bring to you a resolution tonight to approve contract with the Cetacog organization to administer the CDBG program for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three. The amount of the contract is a hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. The funds will be taken from the CDBG administrative line item. Contract has been reviewed by Austin White and was presented to the ERC for their direction and input. If you have any questions, Jamie Schroder and Tyler Dombrowski from Cetacog are here to answer any of the technical issues and we open the floor for your questions. Similar to last year's contract.
Okay. Went to ERC, Mr. Bider?
This is going to ERC and one of the biggest things that we discussed was the scope of work that they're going to be performing now, which is why we see an increased cost of roughly sixty thousand dollars, I believe it was, give or take about five thousand. But we also understand the importance of having Cetacog help us with this program because we don't want to run into any kind of time crunch where this money is not spent in a timely manner and then we get the slap on the wrist from HUD, which we have gotten in the past, and that can affect future funding that we were going to be receiving. So I will, Mr. Pelisi was also in that meeting, so he will need to add about.
I was, no, I have nothing more to add. Hit everything I was, would have said.
Any other questions from anyone?
I have. Skip, are we kind of, have we unraveled a lot over the past couple of years to get things in place where they need to be?
With, with the assistance of Cetacog, we're getting there. Have we, have we unraveled all of the issues? No.
Oh, we haven't.
But we're getting there.
All right. Is there an estimate or percentage wise, or is it more of?
It all depends on what HUD may come back with and ask questions of projects that were done prior to our engagement to Cetacog or prior to my arrival here. So we're dealing with stuff that happened in twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty twenty. Moving forward, we will absolutely follow the rules, dot all the i's and cross all the t's. So what Cetacog is here to help us with.
It's currently an ongoing conversation.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Ms. Beal.
Actually, all that I was going to say is that I feel bad that I feel like Tyler, who's making the, the trip up here every time, we, we seem to have for some reason, a Cetacog resolution on here pretty frequently. And, and I would say that Cetacog doesn't necessarily need to appear in person. If you guys want to phone in, that might make things simpler. So.
They, they did zoom into the, to the ERC meeting and, and they chose to come up here tonight to watch, watch counsel in action.
I mean, I'm trying to keep it exciting up here as our Mr. Mackey and Mr. Pelisi down there holding down the other end of the table, but nonetheless, if you guys would like to stay at your, at your houses and to zoom in, I think we, I think that would be perfectly fine. We have an established relationship with Cetacog and any questions I'm sure can be dealt with digitally instead of remotely, instead of here in person, if you want. But we are happy to see you and thank you very much for coming.
We do have good restaurants here. And thank you very much for, for coming. Any other questions? If not, Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Kat.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Manny. Mrs. Frank, the next resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of Manage Engine Mobile Device Management Service from Zoho Corporation.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hello, Mr. Black.
Good evening. How's everybody doing tonight?
Well, I think we're hanging in there, aren't we?
Yes, yes. What you have before you is a resolution for a purchase of a product from Manage Engines mobile device management product. It allows us to manage the cell phones, the city issues, to certain employees. And it keeps them secure in case they get lost. They can be locked down. It keeps them encrypted with any data that we pass back and forth between the two. We've been using the, I've been using their product for the first twenty-five devices that we have here for free. We're now past that point and we need to add to it. Unfortunately, after twenty-six and up, it costs you money. The original price on this was fourteen twenty-eight and I was able to get it down to eleven ninety-five. That is for one year. That is coming out of contracted services and it was uh reviewed by Austin White.
And this went to finance?
Yes, this did go to finance. Um, uh. We had some discussions around the product, but this is clearly um, especially given the some of the sensitive information that might be found on some of the city's cell phones. Um, a a necessary um item to have in our toolbox. Um, and I think that the only uh question that I did not ask, and I don't know how I missed it, um, was uh. This, this price is good for how long?
One year.
Okay, and then.
It's basically a monthly, but if we buy it as a year, we get a twenty percent discount.
Got it. And historically speaking, have they seen vast price jumps on their products year over year, or do you know if it's relatively steady?
Never had to buy it before. This point it was free.
So we'll learn next year, huh? Yeah, that's the uh, that's the the one thing I think that probably makes everyone a little bit nervous with any sort of contract anymore is that the the tendency of that contract to go up.
This is a fluid price. So if we go above fifty units, then the price would go up.
Um, but right now, I believe you said we're looking at something around forty three, maybe with those fifteen.
Cause I will be eliminating another service that we're paying on a monthly basis for legacy phones that we have. I can move them all over to this one now. Or after this has been passed and approved. And then eliminate that where we're paying. Four dollars per phone per month on those ones.
Good, okay. Um, well, yeah. Uh, no, anyway, cle- clearly a good thing and clearly a service that we need, the the product, um, Mr. Black said it works um well. Uh, so yeah, I think the only question is what it might take us here come moving forward, but um, but there was, it was well received at finance, well deferred to other members. They have anything else to say?
Any questions from Finance Committee at all? If not, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Cats.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing. Whoops, the purchase of Defender Pool Filter utilizing ARPA funds.
Good evening, Mr. Livermore.
Good evening, Men- Members of Council. Uh, yeah, what you have before you tonight is a resolution authorize a. Purchase a Defender Pool Filter at the Memorial Pool um using ARPA funds. Uh, this, the pool filter that we are planning to put in. Uh, one of the state of art thing uh units that we can get, uh, the price of it's two hundred and sixty eight thousand eight hundred and four dollars and fifty five cents. Using Public Works out of the future line item. Um, this was reviewed in Public Works and it was reviewed by City Solicitor. Um. Little back history on the pool filter we do have right now. Obviously, when the pool was put in nineteen seventy one, that's when this unit was put in. Filter's been changed out over the years, but we are still running on to the nineteen seventy one system that we have, so. It is time to upgrade this to make this pool run a lot nicer.
I need a motion for this.
So moved.
Second.
Um, this did come to Public Works and uh this is a necessary item that has to be done and you said it was. Probably going to take about a month, did you say, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, it ain't gonna take long. They're ready to move. Real soon. This company that's doing this, it's called If It's Water, um, they just uh got done installing the same system that like I'm in college in their pool, so.
And this lasted a long time. A really long time, so it's, it is about time.
Yeah.
It really is. Uh, any questions from anyone? Here at all? If there's no questions, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Cats.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, Mrs. Frank?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of the twenty twenty John Deere four oh six six R compact utility tractor.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Up to you again, Mr. Livermore.
Yeah, what you have before you is a resolution to purchase a compact utility tractor. Um. The tractor we're running right now is from nineteen ninety three, so that has served its first perfect life to what we use. Um, it's time to upgrade that as well. Uh, this will be, we are trading this in and the the dollar figure that they gave us is thirty five hundred dollars for a trade in. Uh, for a total of the new tractors, forty six thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and seventy six cents. Uh, this is uh the Capital Projects. Line item uh that was went through my budget that was passed, um, was reviewed in Public Works and reviewed by City Solicitor.
Yes, this this did come to Public Works and uh. Mr. Pelizzi, you know a lot about this tractor, do you?
Uh, maybe a little bit. Uh, I mean, I I was impressed by the price point that we're getting a fifty two horse tractor for, Randy, so. Um, yeah, and obviously the 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 city goes through its equipment and there, those those pieces of equipment are used very. Not to say are are the city is hard on them, but they are used a lot, so they certainly need to to uh. This purchase is certainly necessary, so.
Any other questions? If not, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Cats.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, Mrs. Frank?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a new A, oh, I'm sorry, four five oh dash two five diner tractor.
Uh, yeah, what you have before you.
I'm gonna take a motion first.
Yeah.
You're trying to cut me off.
Oh, yeah.
Need a second?
Right here.
Didn't hear, I'm so used to looking down there at this point. Okay, Scott.
Uh, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a four fifty Steiner tractor. Um. This ain't a normal tractor. What you see, this is a specialized piece of equipment that mows our levees and dike systems. It's designed to hang, uh, hold on to. Two to one slopes, uh, mow steep grades for our levy system. Um. This tractor will be replacing one of our hillsideers piece of equipments from nineteen ninety nine. Uh, this came out of the Capital Projects flood. Line item, uh, the total of the tractors, forty one thousand eight hundred and eighty seven dollars and eighty cents. Uh, this was reviewed in Public Works and reviewed by City Solicitor.
Yes, it just, this did come to Public Works and um I guess the the tires on this is really uh. How many tires are on this? I mean, it's.
Eight tires, yeah, four per axle, so it has a low center of gravity that would be able to stay on the bank, yep.
And how long does this take to do the levy? I mean, by the time you get done at one end, you gotta start all over again.
Three weeks. So by the time you start, you finish in three weeks.
What a job. Um, any questions?
No, I just, I believe that the current tractor that we have is going to be put up on municipal.
Yes, sure, yep. That'll be posted shortly here. Once I, once I get this machine roughly two months, I was talking with the uh. Vendor, um, then therefore go on this bit after that.
Any other questions? If not, Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Cat. Yes. Next item on the agenda, Mrs. Frank?
Resolution awarding levy pumps station design services to G P I.
We got it. Good evening, Mr. Sander.
I see us. Good evening, everybody. So what you have before you is a resolution, please stop moving. To hire G P I engineering for uh. Design services for a backup generator and automated switchgear at three of our nine levy pump stations. With with the relief wells and the cross pipes already in motion as far as either being designed or already bid out, this is our next most critical item in our levy system. This will be paid uh out of ARPA, the a contract with G P I for sixty thousand dollars. Currently have one point seven million left in our ARPA uh levy categorization. As you can see, excuse me, G P I has much experience all over the uh Pennsylvania. Canons, uh, Canonsburg, Philadelphia, Warren, Scranton, um, from the proposal they sent um me. This thing keeps on moving. Anyway. When I put, I put this out last summer, I received five proposals and they ranged in price from. Roughly fifty thousand to upwards of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So they're a solid firm. They're looking forward to getting started and uh. Uh, yeah, they're good to go. So this was discussed in Public Works and given uh no, no recommendations. You guys don't do that anymore.
We don't do that anymore. This went to finance?
No, this one.
Public Works. Yeah.
I I've sat in all the meetings, so that's why I'm confused with all. Okay, this came to Public Works. Guess I do remember this. Um, we have a long way to go with everything that's. With the the levy at this point, between the cross pipes and the pumps. I mean, we're starting to see uh groundbreaking at this point.
Yeah, you'll likely be seeing that this summer, yes.
Which I'm hoping, we were told that was going to happen last year and the year before, but so far because of lack of money and funds, now we have the money and funds to go after some of this. So I I know we're all going to be happy to see that, especially what's going on with with the. I'm sorry, the pump stations, uh, some of them uh were very uh. They weren't turning on all the time.
Correct, yes, yes.
And this is what we, and from what I, the discussion that we had, they're also going to have generators attached to this also, right?
Yeah, standalone backup generators.
Okay. Um, which is something that we haven't had in the past.
Correct. We've had instances where our levy, uh, obviously our levy system gets inspected once every year. Um, there are, have been instances where the pump stations have not turned on, which is not a good thing. Luckily, our city electrician was able to get there in time to turn it on, but in the event that was to happen during a flooding event, that could be catastrophic. That's hence the reason we're putting backup generators on site at the pump stations on three of them. Now, this will spur a one to one point three million dollar construction project. Um, just to let everyone know, we have funding available for that as well with a little bit of ARPA and then the other. Your mic, excuse me, earmark item that isn't quite public yet, so, yep.
Fantastic. Any other, any questions? Yes, Mr. Byder.
If you could be so kind, uh, over the next few weeks, if you could kind of put together, I would say almost like a flow chart as to. What organizations such as Wood.
Yeah.
And um, here we have G P I, what they're doing, and then what the Army Corps of Engineers is going to be doing over the next eighteen months. Just so we can get a little bit more of a better picture of that as a as a body, because there's a lot of moving parts to this.
There is.
And to to fully grasp that, I think that would be very helpful.
That's no problem. It would, just to let you know, uh, would, um, the water resources team from Wood separated themselves, marketed themselves, actually got bought out by a company called. W S P, so Wood is no longer hired by us anymore, so just letting you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
So so now the company is W S.
W S P, the number, the number one engineering firm in the United States, actually, for revenue, uh, as far as revenue is concerned.
I think for, just for for the sake of reflection on the past, Randy and I have seen them go through how many names?
Three or four.
Right. I I think it's more like six or seven. Time I've been on council. Which is kind of epic to me, sorry. Um, just in terms of corporate identity and all that, it seems, but but anyway, um. But G P I is not affiliated in any way, shape or form with Wood.
No, not one of the competitors, actually.
All right. Um, and did we go through an R F P process?
We did. I put out the quest proposals. I got five of them on Penn Bid and like I said, they range anywhere from uh fifty some thousand to two hundred and forty thousand.
Okay, got it. Yeah, sorry, I was over there.
And this was reviewed, I I didn't apologize, sorry to cut you off. This was reviewed by U H Y for ARPA compliance and is okay in that regard, too.
Um. Just out of curiosity. Do we have any estimate on when this will be?
They.
Shovel ready?
Yes, uh, G P I, uh, guy, talked to them a couple of weeks ago. Generators are on as like a nine month back order right now, so it'll be a while.
Oh, okay.
Be a while.
Yeah, but I mean, so this this particular element will be completed. The end.
Yeah, they're ready to start on this. This will essentially get their mechanical engineers and electrical engineers drawing up plans to put out the bid and once out the bid.
And then, okay, and when do they expect to have the bid prepared?
Uh, they did not let me know on that.
Okay, so we don't have any kind of time estimate.
But I can simultaneously get you that information like Mr. Byder his information.
Fantastic. Um, and then they will put out the bid. Are they then, this is obviously not construction management in any way, shape or form. Are they doing, are they evaluating the the bids that we receive? What are they, when they put out the R F P, are they also in charge of?
Yeah, the bids will be just traditional low bid. If you're the lowest qualif, there you will get the job.
Got it. But still, somebody has to evaluate that, right?
Yes, that'd be me and and our solicitors.
Okay, all right. So they, so they're not going to be a party to that at all. Um.
It's not part of his contract, no.
Okay.
Not currently.
Got it. Um, all right. Um, but you're saying that once we get, so. We're expecting this process to take at least, say, six months.
Yeah.
And then once we select a bidder, which would be another month out after we get specs, right? I'd say at least, if not two months.
Yeah.
Um, then we're looking at, yeah, the generators, et cetera, which could be on backorder for as much as eighteen months after that, probably. Okay, um, but obviously some of the work can start. The generators aren't essential to to start the project, correct?
No, correct. And the automated switchgear is actually a very fantastic addition because as of now, Scott's guys have to actually physically go to the pump station to turn them on.
Right.
Based on the height, the water in the river, uh, like coming creek or the or the r- a river, but these will be automated. So once the water hits a certain level, snaps on by itself, so.
Awesome. Um, that's fantastic. Um, okay. Uh, I think that's uh. Everything that I, oh, actually, sorry, my last question was. We had discussed a couple of stations that. If the, if all of the work was done on those stations, the water authority might be willing to take over. They're managing some of the.
Yeah.
Water handled by the water authority. I'm assuming that none of these are those stations, but I can never remember.
The wa- water authority is tied to the Arch Street Pump Station because of some of their. Uh, water discharges from it, but uh, if I'm not mistaken, in the water, stormwater transfer contract, you don't call it that. Two years ago, they explicitly made it um clear that they don't want, they don't want anything levy related until it's credited. And up to.
Right.
So.
Yeah, well, that was, they said until the pump stations were fixed, they didn't want them, which is why I was wondering if any of these were the pump stations they were willing to take once they were fixed.
Not this one, no, not one of these three, no.
Not one of those three?
No.
Got it. Um, all right, thanks, John.
Yep.
John, one of the, one of the questions that I do have, you asked, Mr. Byder asked for a flow chart.
Yeah.
We've been working on this for over ten years. And I think I would really like to know how much money we've spent on this, on the levy, because most of the money that's been spent. Has been with engineering companies coming through.
Yep.
And, you know, we've gone through, the first company was, began with an A.
Amy Wood?
Yeah, it was all wood.
Amy Wood.
All, all that money's been spent with.
Was basically, yeah.
Have we had a.
They changed the name, remember? They changed the name.
Amy Foster Wood, yeah. Then it went to Wood, now it's Wasp.
Yeah, I think it was Amy Foster Wheeler. Might have actually just been Foster Wheeler and then it became Amex Foster Wheeler and then it, I don't know, anyway, right?
They kept on changing with everything, but I would really like to know, and I think everybody else would like to know, how much has been spent.
Yeah.
With wood at this point.
And that's somewhat tricky to do without a. A financial software system that can really tell us that without digging back through paper files. I mean, it can be done, but I think.
Would take quite a while.
It would take a while, I could do that. Yeah, but.
But I, you know, we have spent a ton of money on this levy so far and uh with a lot of the uh looking into. What's going on underneath the ground and things like that. Um, but a lot of it has been engineering costs.
Yes, there's been very little done uh construction.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
The county, the county has put out the relief wells four times now. They came in over budget by about four million last go around. They were currently pulling the package together again to put it out the bid. Again. Obviously, we have some cash in hand now in order to help facilitate that, because fifty of those, there's like sixty total. Relief wells, which are one of our most critical items. There's fifty or so in the city and ten, about ten or twelve are in South Side. They keep on getting. We bet out over and over and over again because they're going over budget. Now we looks, looks, looks as though we have cash in hand from the potential earmark, so. We can assist with the, possibly, but that's not to me, so.
Exactly. Any questions from anyone else? Yes, Mr. Allison.
Just one, um, and I missed this the first time through. Um, why isn't Arch Street uh getting an automated?
Yeah, that Arch Street was actually upgraded with, as part of the water authorities upgrades of theirs. They already have a newer switchgear. It's just a backup generator at that location, so.
Okay.
Yep. And I did, we did, I did just put in for it, it's another grant opportunity through FEMA for seven hundred thousand dollars for a fourth pump station. For upgrades and they did call me and let me know that it's looking good. I will get formal notification in summertime, so. It's what, as far as my gut or not, but things are looking good and Tom Keller's working on that for us.
Good, thank you.
Ms. Bean.
Yeah, the other thing, and I'm not sure if it's even possible to track this funding, but I would be, I I and 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 I don't want you to put together a flow chart or anything, Mr. Sander. Cause I think some, some of this is water under the bridge, but I would love to know how many different funding sources we've utilized for this. And I I think I've probably seen more city money. Go into the levy project than any other single project. You know, we we've received a lot of grant funding over the last decade or so that I've been on city council, but. Most of it has not been for the levy thus far, um, with the exception of some recent uh hopeful funding. Um. But uh, but there's, yeah. There's been a lot of time spent on the levy and and a lot of money and and there hasn't been a lot of work thus far, so certainly it would be great to see. There's been a lot of time spent on the levy and, and a lot of money, and, and there hasn't been a lot of work thus far, so certainly it would be great to see it start to bear fruit here sometime soon.
And I, to add to that, I've been pushing Wasp, WSP quite, quite a bit, hey, what's going on, what's going on with the relief contracts? Are you getting close, are you getting close? They concurrently have a package of relief well, or excuse me, cross pipes for the city and, and the county that are putting out this winter. And hopes, well, now.
For, for actual, for actual bid, get the work done?
This summer, this summer, so.
Okay, alright, alright, fantastic, um, that, that would be good, I think that would be the first. Actual dirt flying we'd seen from our dealings with.
No, I put out a contract a year or two ago with the scour.
Never mind, oh, yeah, 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 never mind, I forgot. But that was just a scour, right?
Fifty thousand dollars worth.
Yeah, yeah, but still, okay, anyway. There's a lot to be done, we did, we did an I, an I beam at some point, right, then we do some, and I won't, anyway, doesn't matter.
Well, yeah, so the good point, that, to talk to that point for a second, we currently have a. Uh, Army Corps of Engineers SQRA. And ever, I'll call it, which is basically, um. Evaluating former Woods work that they've already done in regards to our levy system along like Coming Creek. We, myself and Derek spoke to the, the Army Corps, they are, have not quite authorized the funding to do that yet. We've sent, and are essentially are almost half a million, they haven't. Separated with their half million, so.
Got it. And then we're, we're really hoping that they come back with positive opinions of the work.
I certainly hope so.
Okay. Alright, excellent. Um, I mean, just to be fair, I think climate change and many of the. Um, variables introduced by climate change have made this a constantly evolving project, there's not like a static. Set of recommendations anymore, cause I feel like the recommendations coming from the Army Corps have been enhanced over the last decade, so that we're kind of trying. As, as we are not getting the work done, because we're still working on the engineering studies, the requirements are also changing and making it a larger project, so. It's not, it's not, I don't, I don't believe it's our fault, I also. Don't necessarily place the blame on, on any of the firms that we're working with, but it is, it's a frustrating situation for everyone.
Very well stated, actually.
Yeah, just a, a comment on, um, on the long term as, as well. I think we have three, uh, Mr. Livermore, we have three employees that. On our, two now?
I'm not sure how many we have now.
Uh, yes, you're right, there's, there are two to three, correct?
And, and at one point. We had eleven. Back in the day, to, to maintain the levy system, so we're under manned, and, and that is not gonna change. Um, so. Uh, uh, we're looking at remediation. And upgrading of the levy system, but there, there's a long-term solution. That needs, that it, it's in the works and there's talk about it, but, um, just so the public knows.
Yeah, a lot of municipalities and counties and regions have gone to a levy authority, which is essentially.
The city is not gonna be able to maintain this levy year after year after year, even when it's upgraded, um. It needs, not that we. Don't wanna do our duty, but the levy protects. A lot of, uh, things that are related to the whole county, not just Williams Ford, so. You know, we need to keep that in the forefront too, um, as this is discussed in public, it is. It's not a, just a city issue. It's an area issue and really a county issue, so. We're also doing that, and someday we'll have, I hope, a council here that. It won't be dealing with the ins and outs, uh, daily and yearly problems of maintaining the levy system.
We have nearby municipalities who have effectively created levy authorities within an hour or two of us, and they work well, just.
Yeah, no.
Oh, we all know that.
Yeah.
Yes.
We've got to just make the jump and do it.
Yep.
And that's what we need. Any other questions from anybody or statements? Mrs. Frank, the vote? Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pulizzi?
Yes.
Mr. Byder?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is accept filing the WMWA from ten twenty six twenty two and eleven sixteen twenty two. Um, also ten twenties. From the WMSA, well, that's, you know, with the initials, it's hard to read all this. Um, ten twenty six twenty two and eleven sixteen twenty two. Um, they have a motion on the filings.
So moved.
Second?
Any questions? If not, Mrs. Frank? Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pulizzi?
Yes.
Mr. Byder?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes. Um, next item is announcements, the next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held. On Thursday, February second, twenty twenty three at seven PM at Trade and Transit Two. Um, one forty four West Third Street, third floor. Upcoming meetings is, uh, Wednesday, January twenty sixth, eleven thirty AM for the redevelopment authority. Uh, Tuesday, January thirty first. Uh, eleven thirty AM is public safety, one PM finance, two thirty PM, public works. Um. Next, uh, next meeting is February first, nine AM, ERC. On February second, seven PM is our city council meeting. Um, next item is comments, any comments from city council? If not, any comments from the administration? Anybody out there from the administration wanting to make comments? I guess not. Um. Uh, members of the public, anybody from the public that would like to make any statements? If not, on, there's no news, news media, so I will take a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.